This landmark mission is to keep his soul.
It aren't.
Chief is law landmark.
That's one.
Right. And this. That's their mission. They it's public people have a mission here in their land and some of their relatives died in the fire. They got every right to speak on that issue. And we're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She is the mission. In the.
No, it's.
For them.
A snap.
Alright, how?
Yeah.
And everything is.
Oh, thank you for that.
Good.
If it's a bit towards the end, but.
No, I got the.
We've talked about before we get stacked up.
When I was.
So God, send me to those place.
I'm sorry, down.
That's.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still work.
But I'm putting.
So.
I'm working for everybody.
I've been the. British.
The don't.
Yeah.
I'm interested in.
Yeah.
Like.
Looking at. Oh, oh, oh. This is. And then we have. Running this back here.
And we see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate the.
Uh.
Well, I'm not going to be now here. Let's look at.
You go. Commissioner.
Yes. On my.
I want to share.
With you.
Okay. How we did.
Did you know I like this? You know, my daughter. Like more.
So, so doesn't even run by her.
Don't. And some people like me. And some don't. Don't real. And some won't.
I'm sorry.
I'm. Now, I'm not. So again, back there.
Okay.
It was small. It was like a little.
Cool. You're gonna do.
A little small, uncomfortable.
Yeah.
But the amount of people in.
It's also.
It's condition there.
He's a.
Fair.
And.
Oh, yeah. Everybody. In case.
Think so.
I think.
It wasn't.
You got. The problem is, I'll get the elephant. All people.
I don't. No.
Six of them have the mission. A landmark. Share in the. Yeah. Keep these.
Alright, everybody, it's ten oh one, we're just after ten o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and get started today.
The most.
You're saying. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Alright.
It's.
So, I'd like to call this meeting in order, um. My thing. The man. Yeah. Um. Alright, any of, sorry, my name's John The Fair, I'm a member of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks, I'll be hearing Officer for today's hearing. Uh, with me today are Arthur Delinsky, Senior Counsel with Real Estate and Land Use Division of the City's Law Department, who's the Commissioner's Counsel for today's public hearing. And Deanna Caballo, Architect for, F O U R for the record, uh, Historic Preservation Division of the Department of Planning and Development. Uh, I'll briefly summarize the nature of today's hearing, uh, just before I get into this, we're obviously in tight quarters today, it's a little bit of a smaller room, so. Wow. I think we. If we can keep a crack there, that should be good, um. Just wanted to be mindful, so yeah, tight quarters today, uh, I'd ask everyone just to please keep in mind, uh, we're here to hear everyone out, uh, I'd like it to keep it that we're not talking over one another, please don't interrupt. Uh, we can make it through this today and make sure that everybody's heard on the record for the day, so please cooperate with me. Hate to have to cut people off, uh, and kind of keep chopping things up. Anywho, back, back to it, uh, the Commission of Chicago Landmarks was established and is go- is governed by the Municipal Code of Chicago. The purposes and duties of the Commission are set forth in the Municipal Code and include the identification, preservation, protection, enhancement, and encouragement of the continued use and rehabilitation of buildings in districts. Having special historical, community, architectural, aesthetic interests to the city of Chicago and its citizens. The Commission carries out its mandate by recommending to the City Council the designation of specific building structures, areas, districts, and works of art as official Chicago landmarks. In order to ensure the preservation and enhancement of landmarks, the Commission reviews and approves or disapproves. Permanent applications for alterations to individual landmarks and contributing buildings within landmark districts, including demolition. The purpose of today's hearing is for the Commission to gather testimony and evidence to determine whether twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue is a contributing building to the Motor Road Landmark District. And if so, whether granting the proposed demolition permit would have an adverse effect upon the district. Our testimony and evidence that is relevant to those determinations as set forth in Article Three, Section G of the Commission's Rules and Regulations will be allowed. The format of this hearing will follow the order of procedure set forth in Article Four, Section H of the Rules and Regulations as follows. First, I will hear and rule on all requests for party status. Second, I will take the appearances of the parties and their counsel. Third, I will incorporate documents into the record. After these preliminary matters, we will hear opening statements from the parties. Following the opening statements, we'll he- hear each party's case, beginning with parties in support of the application, followed by parties in opposition, and concluding with a bottle by the owner. Each party will have the right to cross-examination, redirect, and recross as necessary. After hearing each party's case in chief, we will hear statements from non-parties who have submitted an appearance form, first from those in favor of the permit application, followed by those in opposition of the permit application. Finally, we'll hear our closing statements from the parties and adjourn. Any non-party interested in making statements should fill out an appearance form, giving their name, address, and then an interest, organization, or company they represent, if any. These forms are available from staff inside of this room and was outside of the room previously, uh, so please. Make touch with, uh, any of the staff if you haven't put one out and are interested. Now I will hear and rule on all requests for party status and take the appearances of the parties and their counsel. Those wishing to request party status as a matter of right were required to file an appearance form no later than ten days prior to today's hearing, I've received four appearances, uh, appearance forms from the parties as a matter of right. Two from the applicant, Randy Schiffern and Howard B. Brookins, Jr., Law Office of Howard Brookins, in favor of the permit application, and two. From the city's Department of Planning and Development, in opposition to the permit application. In accordance with the Commission's Rules and Regulations, I hereby grant status to Randy Schiffern, Howard Brookins, Jr., and the Department of Planning and Development. Uh, what the applicant and the applicant's attorney please identify themselves.
How's Randy Schiffern?
Um, Howard Brookins, too.
Thank you. And with the representative, uh, of the Department of Planning and Development and its attorney, please identify themselves.
Ellen McLaughlin.
Erin Dozeman.
Emily Barton.
Thank you. In addition to parties as a matter of right, which we just identified, the Landmarks Ordinance allows individuals or organizations to become parties by request if, one, the person or organization's use or enjoyment of a landmark or landmark district may be injured in the approval or disapproval of a permit application. Two, if the person or organization owns, leases, resides in property located within five hundred feet of the boundary line of the landmark dish, uh, landmark dish, landmark or landmark district, all please. Not received any appearance forms from persons seeking to become party by request, so we'll, we'll continue to move forward. We will begin with a chronology of events to the, uh, this public hearing and incorporate the Commission's exhibits into the record, uh, for that, I'd like to call on Deanna Caballo to read chronology of events into today's.
Thank you, Commissioner. The building located at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan is in the Motor Road District. The ordinance designating the Motor Road District as a landmark district is identified as Commission Exhibit One. The preliminary landmark recommendation report by the Commission on Chicago Landmarks approved. Uh, dated March two thousand, revised September two thousand, designating Motor Row as a landmark district is identified as Commission Exhibit Two. On July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Commission on Chicago Landmark staff received demolition permit application number one zero one zero five two one two five. For the building located at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan, a copy of which is identified as Commission Exhibit Three. The Commission on Chicago Landmarks included the proposed demolition permit application on the agenda for their meeting scheduled on August eighth, twenty twenty-four. The Commission staff report evaluating the historic and architectural significance of the building, which was considered by the Commission at that meeting, is identified as Commission Exhibit Four. The Commission staff presentation evaluating whether the building is contributing to the district that was shown at the August eighth, twenty twenty-four commission meeting is identified as Commission Exhibit Five. Public comments received at the commission meeting regarding the proposed demolition of the building located at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan are identified as Commission Exhibit Six. At the meeting on August eighth, twenty twenty-four, the Commission voted to preliminarily disapprove the demolition of the building located at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue. The Commission based its decision on the following findings. A, significant historical or architectural features of the district are all exterior building elevations, including roof lines visible from the public rights of way. B, the subject building, a two-story main street commi- commercial building constructed in nineteen-ten, contributes to the character of the Motor Road District. Which provides an excellent illustration of the early development of the American automobile industry. And features the largest intact collection of early automobile dealerships and related businesses in the United States. C, the demolition of a contributing building or structure within a landmark district is a per se adverse effect on the significant historical and architectural features. Pursuant to Article Three, Section G three B of the Rules and Regulations. And D, the demolition of the subject property will adversely affect and destroy significant circle and architectural features of the property and the district. A letter dated August nine, two thousand, twenty twenty-four notifying the applicant of the Commission's preliminary decision is identified as Commission Exhibit Seven. The letter advised the applicant of their right to request an informal conference with the Commission to further discuss and reach an accord regarding the demolition permit application. On August sixteen, twenty twenty-four, the Commission staff received a request from the applicant to hold an informal conference. The Commission notified the applicant of the scheduled conference date of August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four via email on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. The email communications between the Commission staff and the applicant regarding the informal conference are identified as Commission Exhibit Eight. Following the conclusion of the informal meeting, where no accord between the Commission and applicant was reached. The Commission scheduled a public hearing on the permit application for October seventeen, twenty twenty-four. A copy of the letter sent via certified mail and email notifying the applicant of the public hearing is identified as Commission Exhibit Nine. On October one, twenty twenty-four, the applicant was sent another email reiterating the public hearing schedule, outlining its procedure, and highlighting the deadlines for document submission. A copy of this email is identified as Commission Exhibit Ten. Notice of the public hearing was displayed outside the building located at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan. An affidavit and dated photograph confirming this posting is identified as Commission Exhibit Eleven. Notice of the public hearing was also published in the Chicago Tribune on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And a certificate from the Tribune attesting to its publication is identified as Commission Exhibit Twelve. The public hearing notice was also posted on the Department of Planning and Development's website, as well as at its offices located at one-twenty-one North LaSalle, Chicago, Illinois. Comments from the public received since the August eight, twenty twenty-four Commission on Chicago Landmarks meetings are identified as Commission Exhibit Thirteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. I'd like to incorporate these documents of the Commission into the record, uh, the Commission's documents may be examined, uh, at this hearing and are also available for inspection at the Commission's office. Keep moving forward, we'll now hear opening statements from the parties, please note, this is an opportunity to briefly summarize your position, we have an opportu- opportunity to present your full case following opening statements. Uh, this is the attorney for the applicant, wish to make an opening statement.
Certainly. Uh, thank you. Chairman Far.
Fair.
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 That's fair. Um. Thank you. For the record, my name is Howard Brookins, Jr., and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, my job today is to be Paul Harvey. And to let you know the rest of the story. We didn't start this fight, but we are ready to engage in it. On March twenty-fifth. The applicant offered to the city of Chicago to allow to use this building for one dollar to house migrants and for as long as the city wanted to use the building. Uh. The city unfortunately declined and canceled a meeting the day that they were supposed to meet to look at the bills. Couple of days later, on April sixth, twenty twenty-four, um, I'm sorry, strike that. After he offered that. The applicant went on the news on March twenty-fifth, um, for a TV interview with NBC, saying what he had done and that the city had declined. Less than ten days later, on, on April sixth, twenty twenty-four, inspectors came out and started writing violations for the building. On May sixteenth, he received a letter. From the Commissioner of the Department of Planning. Of the Department of Buildings, Marlene Hopkins. Ordering that he knock the building down, or he didn't receive the letter on that day, but the letter was dated May sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Ordering that he knock the building down in fifteen days, or the city would sue them in court. This notice was not sent to the applicant, according to the notice of the, uh, person serving notice on this, until May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Twenty-four, I'm sorry. As you can know by that, already a signan- a significant amount of time had ticked off of the clock toward the, uh. Applicant to comply with this letter. He filed a, a, a application for demolition, although he had never intended to do so prior to receiving this notice from Marlene Hopkins to the Department of Buildings. On June. Twentieth. We first received the contact from Landmarks, or, uh, Department of Planning from Ms. Barton, asking what were we doing? She, I did not get a response on a phone call, so we sent. Uh, notice, copy of this notice via email, like, hey, we didn't pick this fight, we're trying to comply with respect to what the city of Chicago is ordering us to do. On, on July.
Mr. Brookins, I do want to interject, you will have the opportunity to present your case of, just to.
Oh, I get. So, this, the problem is, is that. My client is tired of being gaslighted by the city of Chicago. He cannot be in the middle of an interdepartmental fight. The building department is telling him that the building is dangerous and hazardous, and even before we could meet with Chairman Wong, they had already filed a lawsuit. Across the street and at saying, in their lawsuit, the city's lawsuit, that the property was dangerous and hazardous, and again, asked that this property be demolished. All we're asking for is equity and fairness, if we're jumping through the hoops, or if the city has an inter- uh, an intergovernmental fight. Then resolve that fight before they come to the applicant and put him in a position where he's, he's paid somebody and is on the hook for hundreds of thousands of dollars to do what the city has requested, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brookins. Does the attorney for the Department of Planning and Development wish to make an opening statement?
Yes, Commissioner, um. Good morning, everyone. Handling, could I, um, have the?
Yeah.
Uh, because, yeah, the first slide. So we all have something to look at together. Can you tell us your first and last, yes, um? Okay, good morning, uh, Ellen McLaughlin, on behalf of the Department of Planning and Development. Uh, as we all know, we're here today because the applicant has asked the city to issue a permit for the demolition of the building located at. Twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue, um. Because the property is located in the Motor Road Landmark District, the permit cannot issue unless the Commission approves the application. Today you'll hear evidence that this property at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan, shown here, and we can see in its current state, uh, on the right. Is a former Fiat automobile showroom constructed in nineteen-ten, designed by prominent Chicago architecture firm, Halliburton Roche. The building features large storefront windows, a decorative terracotta facade, and, um, as the evidence will show, the district contains. An impressive concentration of similar buildings built in the early days of the automotive industry that are similar to this building in shape, scale, and construction. Um, the next slide shows, it's just a sample of those buildings. Department of Planning and Development opposes the wrecking permit because the demolition of this building would be contradictory to all the relevant standards and guidelines. Let's, uh, I'll just go over the standards that are relevant here. Like to show you. I think we're having technical difficulties with our advanced personal slides. Let's continue for advanced couple, I want to show everyone the. Streets game, so we can see the similar buildings in the district, so next slide. And then let's, uh, and the next slide, let's talk about the relevant standards, so if you go to the next one. And the next slide, yeah, here are, um, applicable rules and regulations, um, which guide the Commission's evaluation and permit applications for proposed work involving a building in a landmark district. Uh, so under Article Three, Section G, um. The Commission needs to determine whether the work will have an adverse effect on significant historical and architectural features, which are set out in the ordinance. And under Section G three B at the bottom. The answer to this question is very straightforward when we're talking about a demolition permit, the demolition of a contributing building in a district. Has a per se adverse effect on the significant historical and architectural features of the district, so the key question for our hearing today is whether the building contributes to the landmark district. And we evaluate that, um, based on the criteria on this slide, set out in Article Three, Section G four. You'll hear evidence today that the building at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan contributes to the district because it meets all of these criteria, it exhibits significant historical and architecture features described in the designation ordinance. As well as general historical and architectural characteristics associated with the district, site characteristics, size, shape, and scale, and materials associated with the district. And furthermore, any alterations to the building can be reversed or removed, so for all these reasons, it is a contributed build, contributing building. That evidence today will come through testimony of historical preservation architect and former landmarks commissioner Edward Torres. Who will explain that this property does have historical architectural significance, particularly as part of the cluster of buildings that make up the Motor Road District. Together, as we'll hear, these buildings represent an important, unique part of the city's history. The Commission has also published guidelines for alterations to historic buildings and new construction. And its evaluation of permit applications is also governed by the U.S. Secretary of the Interior's Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. And the evidence will show that demolishing this property satisfies neither of those rubrics either. Um, I will note briefly that applicant has identified, um. Numerous events, uh, that has occurred in recent months, and I just want to clarify, um, that. Uh, as to the letter mentioned from the Department of Buildings in May of twenty twenty-four. Uh, you will hear evidence today from Department of Buildings' First Deputy Commissioner, John Scott, and he'll explain the purpose of that letter. And explain further that that was not a letter that ordered the building to be knocked down, uh, as applicant phrased it, um. Furthermore, uh, I do want to note at the outset that the condition of the building, um, and any code violations that may exist in the building are not relevant to today, today's hearing, uh. The Commission today is to consider only the criteria that are set out in Article Three, Section G of the Rules and Regulations, as well as the relevant guidelines and standards. And nothing in any of those documents mentions the condition, the physical condition of the building, or the structural integrity of the building, or code violations in the building, as criteria relevant to determining.
Chairman.
I would ask not to be interrupted.
Object, if, if I would stop from, from presenting the whole case in teeth, then it is fundamentally unfair.
We'll move, we'll move on, we'll move on, appreciate that, Ms. McLaughlin.
So, I'm about to conclude, um. Those issues, physical condition, code violations, um, might be relevant to a, a different procedure under Section two, one twenty-seven eighty of the code, um. Uh, which provides that, uh, if there is a finding and writing, that there, um. Is an imminent, uh, threat to life of the property, um, that a building could be demolished, there are procedures to do that, which we'll hear about. Um, but here today, um, there is no such written finding, um, of that nature, and therefore the com- the Commission, uh, should not appropriately consider the. Buildings condition in determining whether to approve the permit application.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Okay, we'll now hear each party's case, first we'll hear from the applicant, and then second from T P D. Uh, each party will have the opportunity to present evidence and testimony for or against the permit application, and each party will have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses. Uh, the rules and regulations, uh, permit redirect and recross, and also permit the applicant to per- uh, present rebuttal evidence and testimony. Uh, as a hearing officer, I may question witnesses as well, uh, after the parties are finished presenting their cases, we'll take statements from the public at that point, and once again, a reminder to submit, uh, the, uh, appearance, uh, card if you have not filed one. The. Applicant may now present their case.
The city sends Mr. Schiffern a letter. And we'll mark it, if it's, if it's not already done by the city, well, we didn't understand how this is gonna go, or we would have marked all exhibits and had copies for everybody. But they sent him this letter, and it says, this letter is to, uh, dated five sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Uh, with, from Marlene Hopkins with, uh, Brandon Johnson, man. And it says, this letter serves you to notify under the applicable statute, you have fifteen days to put the building in safe condition or demolish. Even according to the own notice that was sent by the city, it was not served upon Mr. Schiffern, uh, by mail by one of the inspectors, and I can't. Read his or her name. But on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Within two days of, of receiving this notice. Mr. Schiffern runs out, hires a, a qualified demolition company. Uh. Signs a contract to the tune of, uh, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars. Submits a deposit of more than thirty-six thousand dollars in order to comply with this note. Now, the city is trying to say, well, it doesn't necessarily mean that. So we're following this. Process in good faith. We have this informal meeting with the chairman of the Landmark Department on August twenty-seventh. At that point, I tell the chairman, the parties. That should be in this room or not in this room, we could not work out an agreement. And we part ways. Little did we know. That even prior to this meeting on August twenty-seventh, the city had already filed on. August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, a summons and complaint. And list pendants against the subject property. And then their subject, uh, uh, in their complaint, and I assume it's the same law department. They asked, or they stayed in their complaint. And section ten that the building on the subject property would require major reconstruction in order to remedy its dangerous and unsafe condition and is beyond reasonable repair. This is submitted in a court of law. On counsel is right. It is up to this, and what it says in the municipal code, and I will paraphrase it, is the preliminary disapproval of the permit. But it is up to the building department, the board of health, the fire department to determine whether or not this property is dangerous and hazardous. And if it is, then they shall issue the permit to demolish. We don't want to be a ping pong ball in between two city departments trying to figure out and navigate who we should listen to or which we should jump through. He had not until the until the time he received the notice from Marlene Hopkins and and saying that, oh, it was just a form letter or that we did, we didn't mean don't demolish the building, then why would you write a letter saying demolish the damn building? And so with respect to that, that is our our evidence in this case. And and with respect to the pictures. Yes, they've shown the 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 pictures of how they look today. That building has gone through a significant amount of iterations as to how it looked. And I will submit to you, and as soon as I can get that photograph, the night of the E-two disaster, that building looked nothing like that. And with that, I will let Mr. Schiffern read a statement.
It's only a statement.
For the record, Mr. Schiffern, if you could just say your name.
My name is Randy Schiffern. I am the owner of the property in question since two thousand and twenty-one. The building sat vacant. Okay, for twenty years. After the E-two tragedy. And after the city has promised time and time again to the surviving families, in fact, that a memorial will be forthcoming, that will transpire. So with that said, Howard understands the legalities. You people understand your your rules, which I respect. But you know, I think there's a humanitarian position. I think that each one of you has to dig deep in your hearts. Okay, I made this letter up. If I'm redundant to anything Howard says, please forgive me. I'll make it so it's not a very long letter, but I better this way because I really don't want to get emotional again. I've put in my emotions. That I do care about. This building, by the way, was bought, okay? As as an investment, I'm not a developer. And contrary to what I've heard people say, they should learn the facts. There was not a fire in this building. There was a pepper spray incident, which twenty-one poor souls lost their lives in a stairwell stairwell because the city of Chicago did not follow through on their order to close the upstairs. But I was not involved in the building. So with that said, if it's okay, let me just reread this. I'd like to thank the committee. Okay, for the ability to speak, but more importantly, for hearing the relatives of the surviving families. Give them an opportunity of twenty years to speak, to have their say. Okay, so I thank you for letting those surviving families who want to be heard speak. Please understand I have only owned this building since two thousand and twenty-one. I have offered to the city, who helped this city, not to hurt the city, helped this mayor, not to hurt the mayor. Okay, to be used for, as I believe that everyone in this country is an immigrant. And I believe that we all came from somewhere, and I believe very firmly in in helping taking these poor people off of the streets of a cold fall winter and getting them a place of warmth. I offered the building to the city for a charitable reason. And in fact, to do something good. Okay, I'm not a developer. Okay, I said, take it as long as you guys need it. For a dollar a year. So I wasn't one of the guys charging ninety thousand dollars for dirty dirt. Okay, I was not a guy who who the contracts and these rich developers who in fact are milking the city during a time of need. No, I was trying to do something nice. Let's call it the way it is. I got turned down flat. I then in fact was interviewed from a warm climate, I was out of town, okay, by NBC News. They chopped up my 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 interview. They asked me one question on that interview. It didn't take what I said or the reason into, they were doing an article on a seventy million dollar payment or something of that nature that went out of the city and came back with a to be subcontracted to somebody in the city. Okay, that was not my intent. My intent was to offer it for a charitable purpose to help people. So when that all occurred, okay, immediately I wound up getting, okay, within ten days, all of a sudden, they're inspecting the building. What are they expecting? What are they telling me? You know what they wrote me up for? Okay, this is a great one. They wrote me up for they can't have access to the building. Well, any vacant building in this city, you won't have access unless you make an appointment to get in there. They're writing me up for a smoke detector here and there from the outside. They're 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 busy. It made no sense to me. But then we got notified much later. And and again, by that point, okay, I already had contacted the surviving families who I do have a heart for. And and actually, we met and they're wonderful people and they have and they have been shame on this city. They have been made to suffer every single day. If anyone here would have ever lost a loved one the way that they lost loved ones on another February third, two thousand and three, you'd be sitting on their side. So as historical, please, you got a big glass front, you got a little terracotta, want the terracotta, take it. But give me a break. Don't don't be putting things out of context. It's sitting right next to a right next to an alley with a big vacant lot. Okay, but you're still making these people suffer by calling it a historical? No, the Thompson Center, maybe that was historical. But I guess Google, but doesn't have to have the same set of rules. Okay, now, I'm very sorry, I'm getting off the chart and I apologize. Okay, so banana wrong. Okay. So I got the payback, okay, for a bad NBC article. Okay, and started all this mess up. But I do feel for these people. And we've been promising, okay, these surviving families who are wonderful people because I've gotten to know them. Okay, very well. And they're hurting every day. Nobody should be forced to look at where you lost a loved one. Every day see their place of of they perish, shame on us. Okay. You know, I heard at your last meeting here, one of the members of the committee made a statement about our our building commissioner, Marlene Hopkins. Now, I'm not surprised that she's not here today and that she's sending somebody else in her place. Okay, that doesn't surprise me. I'm not surprised that Ernie Wong is not here today. That does not surprise me. Okay, this is the games that everyone plays in the world. But Marlene Hopkins, okay? Okay, is a knowledgeable building commissioner. So shame on this committee to ever say, oh, she misworded something. Come on, she's got a master's degree and education, you know, very, very bright. And more important, she has experience. On May the fifteenth, the building commissioner sent out a letter ordering ordering us to demolish the building or order us or we can fix it, whatever. But there's not enough years to fix. When this city wants to turn around and and they have egg on their face, it's not going to happen. So we chose, I chose to demolish. I went through hoops. I interviewed four different demolition companies, chose one and and did exactly what that letter stated I should do. And I had it in by the thirty-first. Okay, then now comes this committee. You guys come, Johnny come lately. Six weeks later, I signed contracts, I have turned around and I have jumped through the hoops, I have laid out money. I mean, I think to be very, very honest, as human beings in this city. Okay, this is the greatest city in the world. That's why I tried to help Mayor Johnson and this city by doing something kind, by saying, take the, I didn't go to him and say, hey, rent it from me. I said, it's a dollar. Okay, take it. Be my guest. If you got to put a little porta potty in there for somebody or whatever you got to do, be my guest and do it. It's a lot better than them staying on the street intense. Let's have a heart in this world, a little humanity in this world. Okay, now, we turn around and again, we I I if again, we misworded, okay, anything here, she didn't do it. She's a great building commissioner. Does anybody here think that they have her knowledge in in being a building commissioner? Then they should have applied to be the building commissioner, not sit on a landmark committee in all fairness. Okay? Now, put all this aside, guys, please. Just dig deep in your hearts and show a little bit of compassion, a little feeling and a little empathy for as a humanitarian cause, because this is not a landmark building for those surviving families of this E-two nightclub tragedy. This is not an historic building. I hate to say it, please forgive me. This was a graveyard. If you saw the photos, which you'll be happy to furnish, please. You guys all need to look at those photos of that stairwell. It's terrible. Okay? These are families. They lost mothers, they lost fathers, they lost brothers, sisters, sons and daughters. Seriously. They have a little bit of empathy, empathy. Okay, the building has rotted away in twenty years. Okay, period end. Am I a developer? No. Am I an investor? Yes. Okay, but and did I see an opportunity? Yes. But then as I got into it and I found out that that Pat Dow and the rest of the group have been promising these poor families for twenty years. Oh, yeah, we're behind you. We're going to behind you. We want to have a memorial. It doesn't take twenty years to build a memorial. Okay, I hear the mayor always continually say how he supports his people. Support him. You came into an opportunity that in fact you could do something right and good. Doesn't take a lot. I'm the owner of the building. I'm the one willing to lose by knocking it down for the for these families. So I will appeal to everybody who's on this board, use a little humanitarian. If it truly is a matter of a typical political puppets. If that's what in fact goes on here, then I have to say this, do the right thing as a school board did. If you can't do the honorable thing and respect who you see in the morning every day in your mirror, resign. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schiffern. We'll now move forward and I'll ask the city to now present its case. Ms. McGlough, you may now.
DPU presents Edward Lawrence.
Before G P D gets started, just want to remind everyone, once again, close quarters in this space, we want to make sure that we can hear everyone. Also like to remind everyone that the testimony and the evidence being shared today is directed for the record and to me, so just to please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Can you see me?
Are you ready to talk to him? Where are you sitting?
I would stand here. You prefer I sit?
Where you want to be looking. Or maybe closer to the mics, actually, it would be able to hear you better.
He's the star. Torres, please state and spell your name, please.
Edward Torres, E D W A R D T O R R B Z.
And please introduce yourself to our hearing officer.
I'm I'm a preservation architect here in Chicago, downtown office, fifteen people. I've been doing this for about thirty-five years, working on a lot of historic buildings.
And what are you here to talk about today?
Just to provide my opinion that this this property at two four three seven South Michigan is a contributing building to the district.
Let's go through your education. You went to the University of Illinois for bachelor's degree, correct?
Yes.
And what year did you obtain that degree?
Nineteen eighty-six.
What was your major at the U V I?
Architectural studies.
Before working as an architect, were you required to obtain some licensure from the state?
Yes, a licensed architect for Illinois and Georgia.
What firm do you work for right now?
I work for Arda Design.
And what is Arda Design?
We're an architecture firm that we've been in business for thirty-five, thirty-four years. And we mainly focus on historic preservation and renovation of public buildings.
Are you the principal and president of Arda?
Yes.
How long have you held your position at Arda?
As a principal, about twenty years. As owner and president, ten years.
And before Arda, what positions did you hold?
I worked in the Chicago Park District as a preservation architect at the office of John Vinci in Chicago.
Today, as principal and president of Arda, what do you do?
I oversee the business, do business development, overall Q A Q C of the projects.
Have you worked on many historic preservation and rehabilitation projects?
Yes, I would say in the last thirty-five years, hundreds of them.
And could you describe a few?
Pullman National Monument being one of them, the Chicago water, historic water tower, numerous historic schools, churches all around town.
And is one of your responsibilities at Arda to identify significant architectural and historical features of a building?
It's part of our job when we restore a building, we have to identify what is significant to the structure, so then we can restore it in an appropriate manner way.
And do you do research when you make that?
We do research about what is original of the features. So we can decide what needs to be saved or restored or replicated.
You're also an advisor to the National Trust in Historic Preservation.
Yes, advisor for fifteen years.
And you were a member in the past of the commission on Chicago landmarks, right?
I was commissioner member under Mayor Daley and later Mayor Emanuel for five years.
What were your responsibilities as a commissioner?
I worked in the general I served as commissioner reviewing designated reports or nominations, excuse me, and I also served on the permit review committee. And that was about average about ten to fifteen projects per month. We would review them to see if their work was appropriate for the historic buildings structures.
And was that review governed by the commission's rules and regulations and guidelines?
It was. We followed the rules and regulations of the landmarks commission, also the guidelines, the secretary materials for rehab on historic structures.
Are you a member of any professional association?
I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects, National Trust, as mentioned, US G B C and a few others.
And you've received awards for your preservation work, correct?
We have. We've received forty or fifty awards in the last thirty-five years.
What are a few of them?
Well, the Chicago Water Tower, as I mentioned, the Pullman Historic National Monument, All Saints Church in Ravenswood and quite a few others. Thank you.
You turn to tab one, please. Do you recognize this exhibit?
Yes, my resume.
Did you prepare it?
Yes.
And does it truthfully and accurately reflect your education experience in architectural and historic restoration?
Yes.
At this time, DPU tenders Ed Torres as an expert in architecture and historic restoration. And I'd like to move to incorporating his C V at tab one and the rest. You were asked to prepare an opinion regarding twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue. What were you asked to opine on?
That if the building was a contributing property to the historic district.
And briefly, what is that?
Opinion is that it is a contributing, uh, it is a contributing structure property, uh, to the his, the Motor Row, uh, district.
Were you paid for your time preparing this?
I was paid for my time.
And have you prepared a report summarizing your opinions and conclusions?
I have.
Can you turn to tab four, please?
Okay.
Is this a, uh, true and accurate copy of that report?
Yes, appears to be.
I'll move, uh, to include the expert report. Okay. Um, are you familiar with the land, the city's landmark districts of Motor Row District?
I am, but I am familiar with it.
And how are you familiar with?
I'm sorry, so just, just before, that the record is straight. You're asking that the entire town floor be admitted, which is, uh, a document in, uh, ten, seven pages?
The summary of opinion, yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Correct.
That was. Uh, but originally we object. And can I? We would object something to progress. If this is a summary, we wanna see the entire doc.
We clarify all.
It is the entire document. It's the summary of the statements.
How can a summary of your opinion be your entire opinion? The, the definition of a summary is not the entire, it's a summary.
Just to clarify, is there a more full document or, I think we might be getting caught up in this dimension, or summary here? This is the full extent of the.
That's a document, yes. Um. How are you familiar with the Motor Row District?
Um, well, I, after dropping my child off school, I drive through South Michigan Avenue, she does the National Teachers Academy, so I drive through there almost every day. I also ha- I also had my, our office was there at twenty-two forty-one South Michi- uh, South Wabash, excuse me. Um, was there for thirteen years, uh, moved out in twenty eighteen. So, um, very familiar with that district, and I've also done some tours of that district. Very familiar with the buildings, um, including, uh, this building.
Did you review any documents pertaining to the district?
Yes, I reviewed the rules and regulations of the commission. I've reviewed the general standards of the commission, and the guidelines to the secretary interior standards on historic structures.
Did you review the designation ordinance for the Motor Row District?
I reviewed the designation ordinance and also the report, the recommendation of the designation.
Can you turn to tab two, please? I mean, the Motor Row Dis- uh, District Designation Ordinance.
Yes.
It defines the significant historical and architectural features of the Motor Row District as all exterior building elevations, including roof lines visible from the public rights of the way, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you generally describe the district and its architectures, these, uh, exterior building elevations?
Um, the, well, I have to say I'm very fond of this district, um, because it, it i- it is a collection of buildings that were built, um, turn of the century till mid thirties, um, and a lot of them are intact, although they've been, um, altered with ceiling up the storefront, or in this case, in this property, um, there was a, a, a cladding over which was removed. Um, so it's quite impressive, uh, how intact, having, um, worked on a lot of other districts, how intact this, uh, district is with, with the, uh, buildings. And the buildings in general, how, um, terracotta, glazed terracotta, glazed brick, sometimes even the name of the, uh, showroom of the automobile, uh, like Ford and Fiat, you would still on the building. Um, large glass, uh, storefronts, um, height, short between one to five stories. Great scale, nice wall of buildings, so it's a, it's a very unique, uh, area in Chicago, and very unique in the country, actually.
You turn to, um, tab three, please. Do you recognize this report?
Yes, this is the designation report.
Can you turn to page thirty-eight of that report?
Okay.
Um, what is this? What's displayed on?
Oh, this is the map showing the contributing buildings within the district.
And, um, turn to page forty-six, please.
Okay.
What property is identified as number twenty-four?
Uh, this is the Stevens Jewelry Company Fiat Auto Company showroom. At twenty-three forty-seven dash fifty-one South Michigan Avenue, permit date nineteen-ten, Haliburton Roche, the architect. Alteration in nineteen ninety-nine.
And, uh, I've moved the landmark report into evidence?
Okay.
Good, okay. I'm showing you some pictures that are on pages four and five of your, um, expert report. Uh, do you recognize these buildings?
Yes, they're within the district on Michigan Avenue.
Um, can you describe generally some of the defining features of these buildings?
Well, they have large, uh, storefronts on the ground floor, they're within the one to five stories. Their masonry, they have terracotta, stone, glazed brick, glazed terracotta. There is decorative elements, uh, surrounding the perimeter of the glazing. Their, uh, um, signage band is a very similar location throughout, and they're all, uh, within the, uh, property line of the, uh, public way.
Are you familiar with building at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue?
Yes.
And how are you familiar with that building?
Well, I, um, I've seen this building and know its history, um, throughout, having worked, um, just about a block away from here for almost fifteen years. Um, very familiar with its, uh, its storefront, its, uh, amount of glazing is very striking. Um, its ornamental, uh, decorative elements, terracotta of the cornice, the dent hills, the, um, pattern, geometric patterns, the colors, the mantlet roof.
Mm-hmm. And, um, can you tell us about the significance of the windows of the property?
Well, the window, yes, the large windows, which is throughout the district, were, uh, were for the cars that were, um, displayed there. Um, so people walking by could see, um, the, the, the products that were trying to be sold, so they're, they're very large. Actually, they're a little larger than normal commercial buildings, which is what makes them very unique. And the second floor is where, um, typically the shops, repair shops, and other activities will happen, and those were large windows because of the light, natural light coming in. So the workshops can be, uh, well lit or as lit, well lit as possible during the turn of the century.
Are you familiar with the history of the building?
Yes, I'm, yes, I know that it was a Fiat showroom, it was designed by Haliburton Roche, uh, built in nineteen-ten, uh, with, which is within this, uh, period of significance in the district. Um, again, uh, I think it's probably one of the largest, uh, openings within all the buildings, uh, uh, that are within the district. It probably has the least amount of terracotta and the most amount of glazing. Um, the building has a mantlet roof, which is, uh, a little bit unique with the other buildings within the district. Um, the district, the roof was a clay towel, probably made by Ludoichi, which is still in business and can easily be, uh, replaced with the same manufacturer. Um, and it's, it's got a very, uh, subtle ornamental, um, quality to it. Um, and it's, I think it's quite refined in its design.
Are you aware that the owner of the building, um, has applied for demolition permit?
Yes, I was made aware of that.
Okay. So let's talk about how you arrived at your opinion. Um, what standards did you use to, uh, come to a conclusion?
I used the, uh, Commission's, uh, rules and regulations, um, on a, on a application for permit. I used the standards, um, of the interior, uh, secretary interior, which has been adopted by the commission, um, to determine if, if demolition of this property would have an adverse effect to its, um, to the, to the building.
Did you also review the Commission's guidelines?
I did also review the guidelines of the Commission.
But are you familiar with the six criteria that the Commission sets out in its rules and regulations for determining whether a building is a contributing building?
Yes, I'm familiar with them.
Uh, so let's go through them. Uh, criterion one states that the subject property exhibits the significant historical and architectural features described in the designation ordinance. Um, how does twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan meet that criterion?
Well, within the designation ordinance, it describes the, um, it describes the size, uh, the shape, the materials, the colors, um, within the district, um, the, the storefronts, and all of, all of those, uh, characteristics, um, are within, uh, the description of this property.
Uh, criterion two, the subject property exhibits the general historic and architectural characteristics associated with the district. How does twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan satisfy that criteria?
As I mentioned on the previous image, when you see multiple buildings, um, this building also contains very similar, uh, characteristics, size, material, um, masonry, the large openings, um, the property line, uh, where it's set. So it, uh, it is, real, it is, uh, the characteristics are associated with the district.
The third criterion reads, the subject property respects the general site characteristics associated with the district. Um, how does twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue satisfy that criteria?
Um, the site characteristics, as I mentioned, and maybe a little redundant here, but, um, how it's, uh, sits within the public way along South Michigan Avenue, how, um, it, uh, it's, um, its width and height are also, um, similar sizes of other buildings within the district.
And for the fourth criterion, the subject property exhibits the general size, shape, and scale associated with the district. How does twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue satisfy that criteria?
Looking along here in South Michigan Avenue, you could see that the, the property is within, um, the size, shape, and scale associated with other properties, um, even with other properties designed by the same architect, Haliburton Roche, um, and nearly around the same era.
And, um, the materials of the subject property, are they compatible with the district in general, um, character color and texture?
Yes, the general character color and texture, very similar to other buildings. Here, here's actually two examples of the same architect. Uh, the perimeter was a decorative and the floor, um, at the floor levels, uh, uh, where you saw, uh, a decorative terracotta, uh, masonry. Um, the roof line was also, uh, decorative, um, large windows, um, the colors, textures, and everything else is very similar to other buildings within the district.
The sixth criterion reads, if the subject property had been altered in any manner which is contrary to these criteria, such changes could be easily reversed or removed. Um, what is your opinion as to whether twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue satisfies this criteria?
Um, well, it's, it's current condition, it's, it's amazing how, um, a lot of the, uh, um, the building is intact, um, it's, it's been altered, um, very in, uh, minor, uh, way. Um, the, the roof, uh, can be replaced with the clay towel. The opening on the side to the north can easily, can be, uh, uh, opened up and, and returned. Um, so, uh, the reversible, uh, uh, elements here can easily be, uh, done or removed and brought to pretty much close to what it looked like in nineteen-ten.
Also, we'll briefly go through guidelines from the Secretary of Interior Standards. Um, the guideline for demolition under the Commission's guidelines for alterations states that the purpose of designating landmark districts is to conserve the historic building stock and encourage maintenance, repair, restoration, demolition as a means toward an end and so on. Um, how does, uh, is the demolition of twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue compatible or consistent with this guideline?
It is not, unfortunately.
And finally, here are the U S Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Buildings. Uh, we're not gonna go through all of them, but generally, what is your opinion as to whether the demolition of twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan Avenue is consistent with these standards?
Uh, the demolition would have an adverse effect on the property. Um, all will be lost, um, that's existent, that's significant, uh, elements to the building. So it, it would, uh, have a very significant impact, um, on, on the, on the historic structure.
Thank you, Mr. Torres, for your opinion. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Uh, does the applicant wish to?
Is there anybody? Alright. Hi, thank you for coming, Mr. Torres, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. Um, can you, can you put up, when you get a chance?
I'm doing my best, yeah, I'm trying.
So, you've never been in this building, is that right?
I have been in that building.
When's the last time you've been in?
I was before, um, uh, before the owner bought it, I went there to, um, look at it to, to, uh, with another client who wanted to, uh, can't remember what he did, but that was probably, uh, before twenty-eighteen, 'cause I was at the building, so let's say, you know, ten years ago.
Have you been in the building recently?
I have not been in the building recently.
Have you talked to anybody? Have you talked to Ms. Hopkins at the Department of Health regarding the, the structural integrity of this building?
I have not talked to anyone.
Did you go in the basement of this building to see whether it was structurally sound?
No, I did not do an assessment of the building, ever, even when I walked in the first time.
And with respect to this building, from nineteen-ten till today, it has gone a series of iterations or changes to the facade of the buildings. Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, it appears that the facade with, had, um, there was cladding over it that was attached, which what we see it now. That was, that existing original facade was underneath that, so that wasn't removed. So the cladding was put on top of that, it appears that that's what happened. So when you remove that cladding, what you saw was the original facade is what we see now.
Now, three sides of this building and just regular old Chicago brick, is that, is that a fair statement?
It appears to be common brick, yes.
There's nothing significant with respect to architectural, uh, design, et cetera, regarding the Chicago common bricks, is that fair in sense?
Other than that, it's the original facade, which is a common brick, yes. And I think that south side was parched over at some point, don't know when. Um, it was because it was next to it, like stated earlier, there was a building that chased into it. But yes, uh, it is all, all the, it appears that all the facades are original, either common brick or the, uh, terracotta brick, uh, on Michigan Avenue.
Thanks. Can you turn to, uh, tab number five with respect to the document?
Yes.
Had you seen that letter?
Objection, uh, outside of scope and hasn't been admitted.
So you want me to call him as my witness? This is cross-examination, what you mean is?
Within cross-examination, they did not bring up in my recollection, um, you know, uh, since.
He said, then, okay, I'll, I'll get to that some here, let me, you looked at the rules regarding whether or not the properties to be demolished or not, is that correct? Is that what you said on direct? You follow the rules and the regulations regarding, uh, uh?
If it's a contributing structure within the district, that's it, nothing demolished.
So you're familiar with the rules and the regulations, isn't that correct?
To determine that if it's a contributing structure to the district, yes.
And you looked, did you, did you look at rule two dash one-twenty dash seven-eight?
Don't know what you're referring to.
Objection, that's, uh, that's the municipal code, it's not the rules and regulations.
Did you look at the landmark attorney? Have you seen this document before?
Yes, I have a copy of it.
Alright, yeah. So, page ten.
So I'm gonna jump in on that, that off, so that's, that's not directly related to, uh, the initial, um, you know, testimony.
He said he followed through. He said on direct, I followed the rules and the guidelines. This is cross-examination with respect to the rules and the guidelines.
Please.
Did you take into account the preliminary disapproval of a permanent body of permission? Did you take into account the preliminary disapproval of a permanent body permission?
When I um when I reviewed to determine that if the building was contributing to the historic district. The demolition, I that I wasn't looking at that, I was only determined, was only requested to provide my opinion. If the building, even if it wasn't in demolition application was put. I was just asked to determine if the building is contributing to the district, that's it. Nothing with demolition, other than demolishing it, if that were the scenario, demolishing would have an adverse effect. To the contributing property, that's all. I have nothing to say about the demolition, other than it would have an adverse effect if that was the course of action.
Are you familiar with that stat, are you familiar with the statute regarding disapproval of a permit?
I do not determine, I did not determine that, I'm not in the commission. Oh, I'm I'm familiar with a permit application, either a building permit, easy permit, a demolition permit. I know the process. Of of what that has to be, you have to apply for demo, you have to apply for a new building, you have to apply for renovation. Um and that is reviewed by another entity that is not me. And all I'm, all I am testifying is, is this property contributing to to the district?
Are you aware that if the building commissioner makes a determination. That the structure is eminently dangerous. To life, health, or property, that. Notwithstanding what this commission's uh says that they shall issue a permit, are you, are you aware of that?
Objection, this succeeds the scope of direct and it's uh, I think he's reading the code, the municipal code.
I asked that this man, did this body take judicial notice of the statue?
Uh my final thought on that is that he didn't testify to anything about the code, and that's my tears.
Alright, um. Were we able to get what I?
Sorry, I've never done this before, I uh but I'm doing my best.
Okay, then, there was just a better picture, uh.
The nineteen-nine-nine?
I think so, you.
The one with the with the gliding, yeah. That one, yeah, I saw that one.
Um I'll just make a preliminary objection, any photos that even introduce that were not disclosed.
This is a photo that you have on the screen, except for it's in color and it looks better than the crappy photo that you present.
Are we able to pull up the photo that is already been disclosed? Yes, that was like.
That that would be in, I mean, it's in mine.
It's, yeah.
Page forty-eight.
You're talking about this one, right?
Yes.
On page, page forty-six. The two thousand, nineteen-nine-nine-two-thousand photograph.
Did you tell that when this property was built, what but what? What was the trust structure, how how, what is the interior architecture that holds this building up? In fact, if I'm saying.
I I didn't, I did not assess the building, I don't, I don't, I just walked through it. Very briefly, fifteen minutes, I I have no idea what the structure is inside um. Yeah, I just, I'm just reviewing again, to say if it's contributing to the district, that's it.
And when you say contributed, what do you mean?
By all of those six criteria that we went through, that seemed a little redundant, but it's, everything on there is how it's determined.
I'd just like to remind everyone that the applicability here is the exterior of the building.
Yes. And so.
Uh this was not disclosed, which was.
That's the picture. That's the same picture.
I'd like, I'd like to ask the city, you know, your opinion of why.
And we weren't disclosed any, we weren't disclosed any exhibits prior to this.
Correct.
Just up why, not one.
Um I.
Where's the, what's the origin of that photo?
The origin, I believe, is is NBC Town Five, uh the night of the thing, but it's the same. It's the same exterior as in your picture on forty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, if I could, if I could make two points on this, this uh Commissioner, Mr. Perkins. Uh first of all, evidence to be presented at the hearing is to be disclosed. Um pursuant to the rules and regulations, uh Article Four, Section Three A and Four. Any exhibits presented at the hearing should have been disclosed ten days prior to the hearing. We know exhibits were disclosed by the applicant and therefore, uh as a general. Uh our general position is that any exhibits introduced today that were not disclosed should not be considered at this hearing. Now, as to this particular photo, we don't see any harm in uh having a look at it together. It is similar to photos that are part of the disclosed materials, and so for this one, we want to talk.
So we're clear, I have represented Mr. Schiffern from day one. I have not received not one document from the city regarding any of the of of these exhibits. So what are you talking about?
I'd like you to clarify just, just the intent behind wanting to display the image as well, can you put sure that?
The intent behind it is that he made a statement with respect to the architecture and the. Exterior of the building, which is all we are purportedly talking about. That goes to the. Different. Uh. The different facades that this property has gone over over the years, uh from twenty-nineteen to today. And when you looked at the document that was side by side in the in the city's exhibit. It was of a document that even had been further uh uh uh. Changed by the owner, Mr. Schiffern, as opposed to it being original architecture.
So the intent was to compare an image of the time where the paneling was in place over.
Which is actually shown in the city's exhibit on page forty-eight, it's just not a clear picture, it's too wide.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
It's not lost on me that an image, obviously I go back to some emergency or. Yeah, potentially even, you know, the time of the tragedy in two thousand and three was was brought up. Which, um you know, I'd like to note is separate from the building architecture.
I found one quickly on my phone after I saw the crappy picture, that's what came up.
Heard that we found another picture.
Okay, well, then that's fine.
Would you like me to take it down?
Yes, if you're good. And the intro of yours.
Let me ask you this, uh have you? How many of these hearings have you testified?
Three or four.
Have you only testified on behalf of the city?
Yes.
And you pay, you said you were paid, is that correct?
Yes, I'm I'm being.
You've been paid by the city for your testimony.
For my time, yes.
Have you ever testified that a building should be torn down?
Um no, I have not testified.
No further questions.
Mr. Perkins, I do have a follow-up question you mentioned earlier, just about the city having not disclosed uh any of the.
We don't have, we do, we do not have the exhibits or the book that is shown here, we have nothing.
Sure, we uh ten days before the year hearing, there was an email that had uh our appearances and. A link to download all the uh exhibits that we intended to.
So that was sent to Mr. Perkins, Mr. Schiffern, and Mr. David Schiffern.
Uh if if you could submit a copy of that email, so that it is in the record.
Uh I have no confirm.
Is there the city let you redirect?
No, redirect.
Yep. Um. So we can move forward.
Um we do have one more, we have another.
We have another witness.
Could this give me a minute, I need to reassert control of our technology.
Did you need uh PowerPoint?
Yeah, okay.
Just remind everyone.
Thank you.
I would like to ask while this is loading up, just going back in regards to the email, sending up disclosures, if you all are able to do that before. The conclusion of the hearing today.
Email is, the commission is copied on that email as well, and I can uh. Board it again, it's, but it was sent to the CCL email address on uh October seventh at four oh three P M.
What 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 email address did you send?
Well.
If we can have a pretty copy made.
Yeah, we can go back to our office and get that. But Randy Schiffern at Gmail does.
Doesn't exist, that's why I never saw it. Did it come through that, yes, it can too, cause I never got it.
And also.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, we'll get it printed. But I do wanna keep us, keep us on track, it's the the city's witness, Mr. Schiffern? It's the city, very received, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll just move ahead, uh with or without PowerPoint, but could uh could you state your name?
John Scott.
And Mr. Scott, are you employed by the Department of Buildings?
I am.
What's your position with the department?
First Deputy Commissioner.
How long have you been First Deputy Commissioner?
All of it, I believe, June of this year.
Prior to that, what was your position with the department?
I was a deputy commissioner and worked more on the enforcement side of the house.
And in total, how long have you been with the Department of Buildings?
The Department of Buildings since twenty-sixteen, so a little, um. A little break years.
Could you just generally summarize your responsibilities as First Deputy Commissioner of the department?
As First Deputy, uh my my responsibility shifted. I am now overseeing all the permitting that goes through City Hall for the Department of Buildings.
It's one of the department's responsibilities to enforce and attempt to remedy violations of the building code.
Yes.
Now, um we've heard reference to uh a letter that was sent by the Department of Buildings, uh so. I'd like to take a look at that letter, it's at tab five of that exhibit book. And we might be able to pull it up here, uh. So everyone can have a look.
Technical assistance, but in the meantime, if you can use this version, they'll bring it, we don't know if it will respond.
Try. Letting me.
Might be frozen, um.
Okay, um we will save a paper. So exhibit five um is a letter, is this a letter that was sent by the Department of Buildings?
Yes.
And um this letter is dated May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, correct?
Correct.
Do you know why this letter was sent out in May twenty-twenty-four?
Yes, uh at that time and a little bit before that time, the Department of Buildings was conducting surveys. Of all vacant buildings in all areas of the city that were planning to see convention activity. Um this area in particular was surveyed, and these letters did go out to. Owners of buildings that were found as vacant.
Can you tell us the purpose of sending out this letter?
Sure, so the purpose is to put the building owner on notice. That there's conditions uh at the property that violate the municipal code. And gives them an opportunity to make the necessary fixes. Um it also lists demolition as an option. Um however, I think should be noted that if the owner chooses demolition, they would still need to follow.
Objection. One, it's no question pending, two, it's 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 um. It's it's no question pending, he's rattling on, I would ask that she ask another question, and he hasn't established that. That he wrote this letter, that the 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 testimony behind what the purpose of this letter is. We believe that the best evidence is the letter itself, and the thing speaks for itself.
Right, I will ask another question.
And and more importantly, it is not authored by, this commissioner is authored by. Uh Marlene Hopkins and signed by somebody else who is, who whose signature we can't make out.
Alright, let's uh, let's play a little foundation for the letter for a moment. Uh uh Mr. Scott, do you have, are you familiar um with with letters of this nature?
I am.
And how are you so familiar?
These letters are sent out in force of some of our inspections. The language in the letter is boilerplate, the signatures at the bottom change as commissioners change. Uh typically, these letters go out in connection with a vacant building inspection.
And are you familiar with the letters in your capacity as currently as First Deputy Commissioner and formerly as a Deputy Commissioner in the Buildings Department?
I am.
Does this letter indicate that this particular building, which uh I'll note, um this is addressed RE. Twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan, uh does the letter indicate that this building is necessarily dangerous and unsafe?
Not in and of itself, no.
Okay, why not?
Um if if you look to the bottom of the first paragraph. Uh this is boilerplate language again, uh which indicates we're there because of either the building is dangerous. On and unsafe, or uncompleted and abandoned.
So um is it fair to say that the letter suggests that there 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 could be. Different conditions that are triggering the attention of the Buildings Department?
Objection as to what it's suggesting.
I'll move on. Again, does the letter state the demolition of the building is necessary?
It does not.
Does the letter authorize the demolition of the building?
It does not.
If the Buildings Department. Upon inspection of the building, determine that it was eminently dangerous or hazardous, what action would the Buildings Department take?
If our inspectors performed a complete inspection and made a determination that the building was structurally unsound. And could collapse, the uh the building commissioner has the authority under the municipal code. To do an emergency demolition pursuant to the commissioner's police powers.
If the Department of Buildings determined that the building was dangerous, um would it notify Landmarks Commission?
If the Department of Buildings was contemplating an emergency demolition. The protocol and what's required under our ordinance is that we notify the Landmarks Commission in writing. And spell out the dangerous conditions for them.
Was was there any writing made um spelling out dangerous conditions of this building?
I'm sorry, to the Landmarks Commission?
Yes, was any, was any writing prepared for the Landmarks Commission identifying dangerous and hazardous conditions in this building?
Not to my knowledge.
If the owner of a building in a landmark district wants to demolish that building. Uh can you just explain generally what they need to do?
So they would need to start a permit application, they would need to pay initial fee. Um, that permit application would then be routed for review by several city departments, landmarks being one of them. But they would also need approvals from C dot, Department of Water Management, planning. In this case, landmarks. Uh, there would also be, uh, other reviews such as revenue reviews to see if there was any monies owed to the city. Uh, and once, oh, the Department of Buildings could only issue that permit once all of the required approvals from all of the departments were granted.
Okay, and to be clear, because this building is in a landmark district, those approvals would include approval from Landmarks Commission.
Objection. It's contrary to what the statute says. It's an interpretation of law, and you would not know that your statute says, notwithstanding what landmark says, if the commissioner orders and finds that this building be torn down, they shall approve the, uh, permit. And that's in section seven eighties.
All right, I, I am putting on a witness, and I would ask that Mr. Birken's not testified during my witness.
The objection is it calls for a legal conclusion.
Okay. So if you'd like to recite that section of the code, you know, in particular, um, it's being referenced here, maybe just to clarify.
I will.
Yeah, and, and to phrase that to the way it's, uh, Mr. Scott, he's familiar with that.
Okay, Mr. Scott, are you familiar with section two, one, twenty-eight, twenty-five of the municipal code?
I am.
Okay, does it state that demolition of a building or structure that is necessary to remedy conditions eminently dangerous to life, health, or property as determined in writing by the Department of Buildings, Department of Public Health, or the Fire Department? Um, that that, uh, would, um, essentially take the building out of the, the regular approval process and allow for immediate demolition. Is that inaccurate?
That's my understanding.
Of that.
That is, that is my understanding. However, I, I don't think that that applies here.
He's gonna testify to what he thinks about his statute because he's not a lawyer or expert with respect to his statute. It calls for a legal conclusion.
Yeah, can we just clarify, just ask if you're familiar with that?
I'm familiar.
So. Okay, uh, Mr. Scott, could you give us a, a, so in your capacity as a deputy and a first deputy commissioner of the Buildings Department, are you familiar with the provisions of the municipal code that allow for uh, demolitions of, of structures that are eminently dangerous?
I am.
Okay, and, and could you just explain briefly, um, what would be required um, in order for such a demolition to occur for a building in a landmark district?
So the, the threshold requirement would be that the commissioner is seeking to perform an emergency demolition based on dangerous and hazardous conditions observed at the property by one of our inspectors. If that was the case, and the determination was made by the commissioner that this was a candidate for an emergency demolition, and it was a landmark building, we would have an obligation under our ordinance to notify landmarks in writing, identify those conditions, and make them aware of our intent to demolish.
Was any finding made by the Department of Buildings with respect to this property that there were conditions eminently dangerous to life, health, or property?
No.
And was there any notification made of such conditions to the Landmark Commission?
No.
Mr. Scott, does anything in this letter, uh, affect the general requirements, um, necessary to obtain a demolition permit?
No.
No further questions? Yes.
Advocate would you like to cross-examine? Close your.
Have you seen this, when is the first time you've seen the letter in this exhibit?
With regards to this building?
Yes, this letter, this, this letter that's up on the screen. When's the first time you saw that?
Believe I looked at it before the preliminary hearing.
What's, what are you referring to as?
There was a preliminary hearing on this matter.
Oh, you mean the, excuse me, I think of a preliminary hearing as something else. You're talking about the preliminary hearing as it relates to the permission.
Right.
Had you spoken to Ms. Hopkins regarding this letter?
No.
So you know that the letter is dated May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four? That's correct.
That's what it says.
And it gives the applicant fifteen days to put the building in a safe condition or demolition. Isn't that right? That's what it says on, on, uh, paragraph two, uh, first sentence. Isn't that correct?
That's what it says.
And this notice wasn't sent out by Cameron Hughes to the owner of record until May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Isn't that correct?
That's what his proof of service by mail indicates.
All right, so that would be the first time that he would have sent it. Is that a yes or a yes to write it down?
I can't speak for Mr. McHugh. I can only state what's in his proof of service.
You are familiar with the policies and procedures as they relate to your department that you are second in charge of. Isn't that right?
That's correct. It's right. The document in front of me, you're asking me to opine if there are other documents. I don't know the answer to that. I can tell you what this one says.
But you cert, prior to your, uh, testimony of pre, pre, preparation for the preliminary hearing and the hearing today, had you asked for all of the records concerning the subject property at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan?
Okay.
All right. Um, is, does your department make a habit of sending the notices out without proof of service?
Not that I'm aware of.
And you said that this building, uh, that the ci, the city would have had to notify landmarks if the building was gonna be knocked down in an emergency situation. Is that your testimony?
Yes.
But you wouldn't have notified them if the landlord had already took, the owner of the property had already taken it upon himself to knock down the building pursuant to your request?
I, I don't think we made a request.
You don't say, think that the letter speaks for itself, that it says what it says?
Think there's an option in this letter. You can make it safe.
You can make it A or B. In any way with respect to A or B, the landlord would have been, even if he took to put it in a safe condition, there still would have had to been notifications for the landlord. Isn't that correct?
That would have been triggered by his demolition permit application.
Well, he applied for demolition permit application.
And I believe it was reviewed by landlords.
You're familiar with how your department works with respect to taking a building into building court for demolition?
I am.
And that's triggered by your department?
Typically, it's triggered by an inspection.
And, and by the, it's, it's emanates at the Department of Buildings. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And the Department of Buildings would tell the law department that we want to put this property into demolition court. Isn't that correct?
When we refer cases to the law department, it is ultimately their discretion as to whether or not to file a case. We refer things to the law department for their opinion on whether the case should be filed. They advise us on our likelihood of success, and they make the ultimate decision, as does any attorney, of what gets filed.
You give them the facts of the case, isn't that right?
Pardon?
You tell them the facts of the case, isn't that right?
We tell them the findings of our inspection.
And that is what they put into their complaint, isn't that correct?
I, I gotta speak for the law department here.
With respect to the subject property, did, did the building department, um, submit it to be placed into demolition court?
I believe we referred a case to the law department.
And as a result, they filed, uh, they filed a complaint in Circuit Board of Cook County on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, captioning the City of Chicago versus Motorola Investment. Isn't that right? Under case number twenty twenty-four, one, four, zero, one, three, zero, nine. Is that right?
I don't have the case in front of me, but.
I'm showing you what's marked as, uh, or you could take judicial notice of it because it's a public trial. But it's a statement against the interests of the city of Chicago.
I would object to an undisclosed exhibit being presented.
It's their document. They made it. They created it. They filed it. It's a public record.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, all would like to take. So much to bring as well. We'll discuss this later.
I, I just don't have, I, I don't check my phone. I don't have.
Well, I have looked at this complaint. I don't know if you'd like me to give it to Mr. Scott to look at, or if there's a pending question?
There will be a pending question. I'll turn, point him to a specific one.
Right, statements in particular. So Scott. Mr. Scott, in particular, uh, item ten that's highlighted is, I think, a lot of questions is gonna come from.
Mr. Scott, I'm telling you, um, what I mark is petition is exhibit one for identification purposes, which purports to be a, uh, copy of a complaint, um, filed by the City of Chicago in case number zero-two-two-four, one, four, zero, one, three, zero, nine. Um, the information contained in that, in that complaint by the City of Chicago would have emanated from the City of Chicago Building Department. Is that correct?
This would have been drafted by the law department.
But the law department would have got the information and put in there from the building department. Is that correct?
Only violations.
So with respect to, right, with respect to violations, with respect to whether or not the building was dangerous or hazardous, is that correct?
We would send our violations over to the law department.
Okay, can you read number ten?
Defendants have violated and continue to violate these provisions by allowing the subject property to remain in a dangerous and unsafe condition posing a danger to public health, safety, and welfare. Building, the building on the subject property would require maybe reconstruction, can order a remedy, it's dangerous and unsafe condition. It's beyond, you know, what we're.
Thank you. I will, or I can, or they can take that copy, or I can try and put one down without the, the, the writing on it and pass it down, but you, I have more, not with me, but you can have that back.
Okay.
Yeah. And. And do you know that the owner of the building, uh, 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 applied for, I think it's in your sentence, applied for a demolition permit? Oh, you all have the terms in here. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you all have a picture of the building. Um, can you look at, uh, in, um, tab number six of the just cities exhibit? And it is the the fourth page titled demolition permit application? Do you see that?
I do.
And when that application, do you know if that application was filed with the City of Chicago?
I believe it has been.
Do you know what date it was filed with the City of Chicago?
I don't see a date of filing here.
When that application is filed, does it im- immediately come to your department?
It's just filed with our department.
So you would have known when you, in theory, the building department knows when they got this document. Is that correct? Now, after they got this document, what happens?
Typically, what, what happens is it, it is routed for reviews by all of the other departments that look at these permit applications.
Including landmarks?
Including landmarks.
Now, when you, when this, so this document in and of itself would have been sent to landmarks?
I'm not sure if the entire application packet goes to them. I believe it does.
Do you know if at the point that you sent this document to landmarks or notification, would you have also sent the notification that you had, uh, sent the owner, uh, this letter that's marked, uh, and on the screen?
No.
Did you notify landmarks prior to the informal meeting? Informal meeting with landmarks that the building department had already requested that the City of Chicago file a action in court to, uh, 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 a building court for the subject property?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Did you notify landmarks prior to the informal? Prior to the informal meeting. Regarding the demolition permit. That the building department had already referred this action. To the city of Chicago law department for legal action, including demolition of the subject property.
So, those notifications are typically in our internal database. Which landmarks has access to see if there is a case that has been created. And that's typically how they receive the notification.
I get, I get no further questions.
So you like to redirect?
Just briefly, um. So, based on your, um, your knowledge of, I, I would first ask, are you familiar? Generally with the process by which violations are referred to the law department and then taken when necessary into the circuit court?
I am.
When a, a case is filed involving a building, um, there are multiple, is it, is it fair to say there are multiple remedies? That could be sought uh, by the city in the circuit court?
Correct, typically our complaints have separate counts, each count seeking a different remedy, we do not. Can we proceed on all counts? I mean, it's, it's usual that we would pursue uh, one count or maybe two counts. But it's, it would be rare that we went to trial and every count in a complaint of this nature.
Okay, so now if the, if a complaint includes a potential remedy of demolition, is that. Necessarily only remedy that the city would seek in that case?
It is not, and, and I believe if you look through that complaint, you can see the other types of relief we are seeking.
And could you just give us a sense of what might that other type of relief look like?
Um, so we can seek injunctive relief, we can. Uh, we can ask the court to appoint a third party to make repairs, if that's appropriate, we can seek orders against the owner. To make repairs uh, to their own building. Uh, we can seek fines, we can see, seek other costs and penalties, so there's a whole host of remedies. That are available in the complaint that I read from earlier.
Yeah, uh, and just to clarify, uh, and who would, who would decide? What remedy, what violations existed and what remedy is appropriate, uh, that would be the circuit court, correct? For a case filed in the circuit court?
I don't know that he's, I don't know that he would be an expert to say that, he's not a lawyer, but.
For the record, I am aware.
Oh, okay.
So, just to be clear, um, those determinations about. The appropriate remedy, what violations existed, would the landmarks commission play any role in deciding that?
No.
No further questions.
Yes, you do play, but the building department plays in a, a role with respect to a, a building that is in uh, housing court, isn't that correct? Is that a yes?
As, well, as I stated earlier, we've provided the law department with the violations that were written during our observation. Throughout our inspection, it is up to the law department, as it is for any law firm, to fashion a complaint. And to consult with us about available legal remedies.
And but you play a part in what is asked when the matter gets in the court, isn't that correct?
That's fair to say.
You send inspectors out, uh, and the court orders inspectors to be able to go into the subject properties, isn't that right?
Sometimes.
And with respect to this property, you, you, you're a lawyer, is that right?
Yes, sir.
You all drafted this document, isn't that right?
I did not draft this document.
When I say you are, the city of Chicago drafted this document, isn't that right?
Familiar with the drafter of this document.
Well, how did this, how did those letters appear on the page?
This, this document was in use when I came to the building department in twenty sixteen, I assume it was drafted sometime before that. And I wasn't here to identify who the drafter was.
It came, it, it, it came from somebody within the city of Chicago. With respect to this particular document, it is signed by your commissioner, isn't that correct? And those words do say, to give a choice, is that correct? One of two things. Is that right? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
Which portion of letter are you referring?
I'm looking at the second paragraph, the first sentence.
So yeah, the first sentence speaks for itself, you can make the building safe or you can seek to demolish it.
And how many days?
You have fifteen days to put the building in a safe.
Fifteen days from May sixteen, twenty twenty four is when.
I don't have a date calculator in.
Alright, so you would admit that by the time that uh, your person sent the affidavit to service. Uh, five twenty three twenty four, a significant amount of time that already ticked off the clock pursuant to uh. Paragraph two, is that right?
I would going to object that all of this is not appropriate uh, re, rebuttals, not sure what point in this process. So I, I don't think, I think this goes outside of the scope of, of my rebuttal.
With respect to this letter, you don't, you don't just put that up for uh, uh, to be fooling with people. The, the, the letter means something, isn't that right?
The letter puts the building owner on notice.
And, and when you send this letter out, you intend the building owner to do something about it, isn't that right?
Sure, yeah.
And one of the two things that you wanted this particular building owner to do. Is to either fix it or make it in a safe condition within fifteen days, is that correct?
We do not routinely enforce that fifteen day rule.
Is that publicized to the public, don't just disregard what it is that we say with respect to the letters that we send you?
No, that's, the letter speaks for itself.
And the letter speaking for itself says fifteen days of demolishment.
I think it would be helpful if you read the entire paragraph. I think that's the answer.
You're a lawyer, right?
Yes, sir.
And you know ambiguous language is, is, is construed against the drafter, isn't that right?
I don't think it's ambiguous.
That's because you're a lawyer, but that, and a person can read that in two ways, isn't that right?
Let's wrap this up and I'll see how spiral.
With respect to the uh, information by the city in its lawsuit, it says that the building is in dangerous and hazardous condition.
I'm gonna object because it's far beyond the scope of the rebuttal, uh, and I think all of this ground has been well covered at this point.
I agree. Alright, I, I have no further questions. Can we take a five minute very quick one has to go to the restroom? Or less, I don't know how close to restroom.
No, it's down all, straight others.
Is it open? Yeah.
Not fast doesn't work.
There's no pass available, the next one is on the ninth floor, there's a pass available, we'll allow, thanks, five minutes.
Thank you. This is tech support, just, just wanna let everyone know that we are still live and the audio is on. It's O'Dea and the building department, it came out.
Okay, everyone, it's been five minutes, uh, to leave everybody's return back to the room, so we'll pick things back up and keep things in the door. May actually wait for Deanna to return though, so. Okay, well, we're gonna get started, if I could ask everybody, once again, thanks for the, just keep, keep your volume down. We'll, we'll keep proceeding, um, assuming that the city has. No other, no other witnesses.
No, the, the city would, uh, for housekeeping purposes, we've moved exhibit five into evidence, which was the, the letter from the building's department.
And, and we're gonna get to, to that bit just now, um. Each of the parties now should have a copy of the email uh, sent on uh, October seventh. In regard to the disclosures, um.
I, I, I do, and just for the record, I, I checked my phone where I would also get this, I don't have it, so I don't know what happened. I acknowledge that it says what it says, but I did not see this.
Can you acknowledge that message?
Yes, that is my email.
Okay. Um, and, and based on that, just the, the city offered six exhibits. Uh, you know, in their disposal, just to go over those for the record, um, first one was the. Resume of Edward Torres, AIA lead AP, second was the designation ordinance for the motor road district. Uh, dated December thirteenth, two thousand, the third, the landmark. Oh, yeah, that's important.
We should, we should have, or I just noticed that. Donna? He's coming.
Alright, everyone, just grab everyone's attention again, uh, just stepping back, um, the city. Um, you know, had no further witnesses, uh, we were shifting our focus to. The uh, copies of the email that was sent out on October seventh. Uh, in regard to the city's disclosures that were shared with both parties uh, from the through, um, Mr. Brookins uh, acknowledged that.
So here, we have no objections with respect to the exhibits one through six. We just go play record, for whatever reason, we did not receive one, but we have no objection with respect to the exhibits. And we would just, um. Before, I assume that that was the last fact witness, we believe that this body is able to take judicial notice. Of uh, documents that are in the public sphere, we would just ask that, well, either the. Uh, complaint filed by the city uh, be admitted into uh, evidence. And that the. City being able to take initial notice of the entirety of the landmark ordinance as opposed to just. Uh, certain passes.
I believe we'll move on to uh, hearing the statements from the public. Um, so we'll move on and hear those statements both for and against uh, the permit applications. Um, statements from the public are expressions of opinion, uh, individuals making statements are not parties. Uh, nor expert witnesses, uh, they're, they are not speaking under oath and are not subject to cross examination. Anyone wishing to make a statement should have filled out the form already, uh, which you can still give to the commission staff. Uh, form, uh, ask for your name, address and any organization that you represent. Uh, interested persons may also submit written uh, statements for the record as well. Uh, please keep your statements brief, um, I'm asking approximately thirty, three minutes, uh, it's. The purpose here is that we hear everyone out, but we do want to hear everyone out, so I'd ask you to best your ability, stick to that three minutes, I will. Try to wave down if you're going a little bit over. And, and I would ask that you please try to avoid repeating any information that's already been given. Uh, you could feel free to just simply state your name, address, organization, um, if there is any. And whether or not you support or oppose the permit application. Uh, so, it looks like we're setting up for folks to have their statements here at the podium, it looks like. Um, so we will begin with those uh, statements in favor of the permit application. Uh, I'll start first by asking Japara Hicks uh, to please uh, come to the podium and give. Uh, their statement. And, and if you could, for the record, if you could spell your first and last name, just so that we can have it accurately represented.
Hi, um, my name is Japara Hicks. Um, my mother. My, my name is Phil S. H. A. P. A. R. A. Last name Hicks, H. I. C. K. S.
Oh, you can make your statement.
Oh, um. First of all, thank you guys, I mean, uh, I just wanted to say that, um. What happened at that location is uh, issues was uh, very life changing for us. And it's really hard, you know, one day at a time, but when you have the right people, you know, standing beside you and. Um, representing you, so thank you so much for those that actually care. About what your building stands for, uh, it really means a lot to me and the other victims that lost their parents there. And we just want it all to make some change, you know, we all still hurt, we know that it was years ago, but it feels like last night. The moment I walked in there, I'm like, I can't handle it. I just thank you guys so much for having me, I thank you so much because. I never felt a hundred percent like there's someone out here that cares and have our back. Nobody even cared if you act in Indiana, it's old to other people, but to us. We actually wanna do something about it, and I thank you for taking the time out of your life, not just your day, but your life, I thank you so much and. Just wanna let you guys know that God is good and that's why we're still standing here today.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Okay, moving forward, Howard Ray. And and Mr. Ray, in addition to spelling your name, if you could also clarify if you're in favor or in opposition of the permit.
My name is Howard Ray. I'm the vic, I'm the brother of the victim, the Shan Ray. What we're here, the E two family, we're here to be a tribute to the decision-making that whatever the owner or the city comes up with, because we want equity and fairness to all the family, like she just expressed. She never even got closure. I mean, as far as she she had, she needs psychological help. She had to receive that, and many other other families hasn't received that. Our goal is here and in the future for these members not to be forgotten. The victims I'm referring to, basically, we want the families and the victims to be able to empower the community and to sort of each family member and community member can enhance their quality of life. So I want to read a a statement. I'll read real brief. And we give my summary of what happened to me that night, and everybody else, how they got notified, was different than my notification, so. The worst day of my life occurred on February seventeen, twenty oh three. In the early hours of that day, I received a call from a relative telling me that there was an emergency. It was the type of call no one ever wished to receive. The cold morning felt sharper than any I've ever known. When I arrived at the scene, people rushed to tell me that my brother, the Shan Ray, was inside the E two nightclub and was likely among the victims. Four to five antagonizing hours later, it was confirmed my brother, along with twenty others, had lost their lives inside the nightclub located twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan. People in the E two family received similar notification about their loved ones, but it was different notification. So today, twenty-one years later, twenty-one victims. We gather here to discuss the future of this building at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan. The Commission on the Chicago Landmark is reviewing whether to preserve with demolition. I'm here to speak on behalf of family members who could not be present and to stand a hand to other family members affected by this tragedy whom we have yet to connect with. Our goal is simple. We do not want the memories of our loved ones to be erased. So we're proposing, along with this, meeting with the city and ownership. The victim family would kept request a meeting with the Landmark Commission and a current and the current owner of the building to understand and development, understand the development plans for the property and the surrounding areas. We also wish to share our vision for what should become of this site. Okay? Two, establish a benefit agreement. Whatever the future holds for this building, we propose of a benefit agreement, a portion of the revenue generated from the property, whether through develop redevelopment, rent, or sales, should be allocated to create a lasting impact for families and communities affected by the tragedy. Number three, the creation of the E two financial center. We envision the establishment of an E two financial center. A resource that will honor the memories of the twenty-one victims by empowering communities. The center will provide low-interest loan and business grant to families in distressed neighborhoods, offering them a chance to build generational wealth. Finally, conclusion, the E two financial center will serve as both a memorial and a tool for positive change. It will ensure that this tragedy is never forgotten by transferring sorrow into opportunity. In doing so, it will help future generations thrive and bring a higher quality of life to under-deserved community. We are not simply here to reflect on the past. We are here to honor twenty-one lives lost by making sure that leg- legacy creates a brighter future for others.
Can you just ask him to spell your brother's name?
A. S. H. A. N. D. R. A. Y.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'd like to call Mary Carwell to the podium next. Mary, if you could spell your name as well.
M. A. R. Y. C. A. R. W. E. L. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Demetria Carwell. Her name is spelled D. E. M. E. T. R. I. C. T. A. Carwell C. R. W. E. L. The night the tragedy happened, I said, be a daughter, Lenisha, here. That's her daughter. At the time, Lenisha was about four. And she cried at night, wouldn't go to sleep, nothing. And I said, Lenisha, it's gonna be all right. Your mom gonna bring you something back. So I called her mom, and I asked her mom, when she answered the phone, I said, what's going on? She said, we here in line for getting to E two and woo-woo. And I said, how long you been standing outside in line? She said, about an hour. I said, an hour? So I wasn't standing in that line like that for nothing. Said for nothing. And she said, well, we just about there. Sure, we finna get in and snap. But my other daughter was supposed to go to her. Thank God that she didn't go, because they were so close. And when I got a call later, one of my friends called and said, hey, Mary, did you look at the TV? What was going on? I'm like, no, what's going on? Something happened in E two at that incident. I just knew I could feel that something was wrong. Excuse me if I'm being terrible. And it was so bad, and that was time. My depression had got so bad, I couldn't wrap up after E two. I stopped working. Because it took me a long time to get over it. I stopped back working. And because my daughter, me, I would take turns when we get up. When we beat the day, we had the same days off work. So we just cuddle up and bed or eat breakfast together, and it used to be so bad. It's really terrible. But to say for those twenty-one that that it was terrible. And about the building, I just feel like it should be torn down. And that maybe something else, but please don't open the building back as the that E two company or whatever. Please, y'all, don't let it be. I don't want to see nobody going in there as eating food or it being a restaurant or anything. And when I got a call from this man to meet with them at a meeting, we went in the evening, and I just came up like, that would be so great. Because I just feel, since he said he wanted to turn into senior living center, I'd rather for it to be that, to be anything else. And I'm here to ask, please, you know, heal my pain. And the twenty-one people that is going through it like me. Sometimes I hear my daughter voice, and that hurt me so bad, because I can't find her, I can't look or can't see. And if that place opens as anything else, I'd just rather for it to be a senior place, nowhere for those who you know, it's it's helping out the seniors or whatever. You know, not to be just there so they can open it as a restaurant or anything. I didn't know at first that it was a landmark building. Until they said it, I just felt like it shouldn't be whatever the city wanted to be. And that's the last thing. So thank y'all for this. I'm thankful for me being here to have the opportunity to talk to you guys in person. That pain is still in my heart, and it's still hurting. My daughter was twenty-three years old at the time. She was an officer administrator. And oh, and the airport is, it's it's hurt. It's hurt so bad. I never get over that feeling. And I truly, truly with my heart, thank y'all for listening to me. Because we do need people to talk to about what happened in that. So I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carwell. Well, we'll call next, Lenisha Crawford to the podium. Lenisha, if you would spell your name as well.
L. A. A. I. S. H. A.
And your last name is.
C. R. A. W. F. O. R. D. And I just have no time to break down. There's more than a car lot. It was E two there too. And it's more than just art in those windows. It's families that were lost in there. It's not just art. There's something that needs something to be. But if you demolish it, put something good like Mr. Randy or Deshaun Ray's brother idea there. If you don't demolish it, try to put something else good there, because we deserve something that we remember. Our family, since y'all seem like y'all forget all the time. It's been twenty-something years. I'm grown. I'm the same age as my mother, past my mother's age. And I still have nothing to remember my mother, nothing to, like, go to praise her or like, to even think about her in a good way. Like, it's it's just that negative feeling from that club. I said, we haven't asked for much, but we're asking for something. We're nothing without each other, so the E two family will be justified with or without y'all as long as I'm alive. Soon as somebody tries to do something here, here goes the doubters and the neglecters again and again. Stop doing that to us. Stop leading us on, and I pray to God y'all don't do this to the new owners, because the city just tried to run him away like they try to do us all the time. The other buildings that are around that y'all showing, that's hysterical. But that's because there wasn't a car lot or a club, so why compare them to that same thing? Why is it making, what what makes this place so historically unique? If it's so historically, then tell the truth and nothing but the truth about this disgusting building.
Now we'll hear statements opposing the permit application. We'll start with Alderman Pat Dow. And just as a reminder to everyone, please, we we want to hear out all the statements, just to please to keep, keep as quiet as possible.
Thank you, Chairman Fair. I deeply empathize with the families that are here today. I appreciate you taking your time out to come down to City Hall to express yourself. I've already committed to requiring a memorial at site. When I met with you, Mr. Ray, in twenty fifteen, your father, okay, maybe y'all look alike. When I met with Howard Ray, Senior, in twenty fifteen, I made a commitment to him that I would work with the families and the owner to do a memorial at that location. Notwithstanding that you've had this building since twenty twenty-one, and I haven't heard from you until you called me this year about this incident and invite me to a party, I would have worked with the owner and you and the families on a memorial. I've already supported the families at the lake funds with the commemoration that was there. But I do agree that it's important to memorialize and recognize those people who lost their lives and twenty-one young people who lost their lives that February in twenty twenty-three, I mean, twenty oh three. But when I think about the issue that is before us, which is the demolition permit, I must ask the Landmark Commission to uphold the findings of the Department of Planning and Development and not issue a demolition permit at twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan. First of all, the building is an important building in the Motor Road District. It is, it meets the criteria of Article three G. I think that's been discussed this morning. And it is a building that was designed by Holger and Roche, which was around in the eighteen hundreds. I think this building was constructed in nineteen oh eight or nineteen ten or something like that. And that the zoning itself does not allow for the building of a residential unit there. There's no residential after the landmark designation was given in two thousand there. So my commitment is to work with the families on whatever is developed there, whatever you decide to develop there, Mr. Shipman. Importance with the current zoning, I'm more than willing to work with you and the families to make sure that your goal as a developer or as an investor in our neighborhood is met and that the memory of the twenty-one people who died that night can also be acknowledged. Thank you.
Right, can you spell your first and last name?
My first name is P. A. T. My last name is D. O. W. E. L. I'm the third ward, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Next, I'll ask Bonita Sanchez Carlson to the podium.
I could stand on this.
Sure. And if you could, just, you know, give the correct spelling of your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Bonita, B. O. N. I. T. A. Sanchez Carlson, S. A. N. C. H. E. Z. hyphen C. A. R. L. S. O. N. I am the president and executive director of the Near South Planning Board, a neighborhood, community, non-for-profit organization. Been with the organization for over thirty-four years. It 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 was a very horrible day back then, and I don't want, just getting phone calls of what was happening. And so my heart goes out to all of you in in that. Don't, can't imagine what you're going through, but I pray for you all. I've spoken with Alderman Dow on numerous occasions to to talk about the importance of the memory, so I support that as well. I represent the community in that near south area. When I started, I was in the Chicago Defender Building over thirty-four years ago, which is literally diagonal from the location. And through that year, we have been part of the preservation of the Motor Road Historic District, so that's why I'm here as the organization that has been looking out for the preservation of that area. And so I too mentioned that I have not heard anything from the applicant. I've reached out and and mentioned to the Alderman and a couple other individuals. In our organization, we reviewed projects and plans and proposals that affect the Motor Road Historic District, and we have not seen not one thing, only what I've been hearing. And reiterating what Alderman Dow mentioned, that we wanted to make this an entertainment district. And so the ordinance did not allow for residential currently. So we would like to notify the commission that we do not support this application. Uh, since we have not received any information about the plan from the owner or reasoning for the proposed demolition. At this time, we must support the landmark restrictions on the property that prevent contributing properties from being demolished. Uh, we want to reach out to the to to the owner, uh, learn more about the plans for the site. Uh, we'll fight for memorial for whatever uh, is is decided. Uh, but at this time, we uh, do not support the record, no. Twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I'll call for, I apologize in advance, but Kendra Parzo, Landmark Leaders. Thank you so much. If you could get the correct pronunciation and spelling. Thank you.
Of course. Um, good afternoon. My name is Kendra Parzen, K E N D R A. P A R Z E N. Um, I am the Chicago area advocacy manager for Landrick's Home and Land. And on behalf of my organization, I oppose the application to demolish uh, two-three-four-seven South Michigan. This building, as we've heard, was constructed as a Fiat showroom, but I think it's.
Would you speak up, please?
Of course. Uh, but this building, as we've heard, um, was constructed as a Fiat showroom. But I think more significantly, uh, it was the site of those tragic events in two thousand and three. Uh, I want to thank the family members for their bravery and sharing their stories with us uh, here today. Um, I understand uh, you know, from the media coverage, the applicant is proposing to memorialize uh, victims of those events. As part of his plans for the site. Uh, we completely support memorialization if that's in accordance with the wishes of the families um, of those who perished. However, memorialization should not be wielded as a means to push through the demolition of a historic building. Instead, it should take place after an inclusive process where those affected are respected and valued. Treated with fairness and dignity and lead the decision-making. To my knowledge, such a process has not taken place. I apologize if I'm mistaken. If at the conclusion of such an inclusive and considered process, it is the family's collective wish that the existing building should be demolished. We would not oppose that outcome. Thank you for considering our comments.
Thank you, Ms. Parzen. Uh, next, I'd like to call uh, Mr. George Blake Moore.
I'm not the one. Anyway, it has been very important to miss him. But what's going on here in our city of Chicago, I've seen many of these uh, historical landmarks. A medium. However, this was something else. How they were trying to bully the owners of this building. The city is corrupt too. And when I came in there, I had some words with the gentleman. Because I was in favor of of landlord. But the this process, the way you have treated this owner, it it it's not good. You've been a little bullied and compromised. Unprofessional, un-American. He owns this building. And you threaten him, you bullied him, and told him he has so many days he has to turn back. So many lies were going on. But this man was able to have a couple times of professional black attorney. And he made the city look very little. I watched the whole process. Now, you're telling him what he should do with his property. But it should be kept as a landmark. But you're telling him what, how he should landmark. It should be left up to him. And if he feels that it's some moral, he should do that. So again, it's very, very important for a citizen like me, not pros or cons. No, no family member of land died there. I have no financial interest here. The the city look very small here, very corrupt here. The landmark and the building department tried to bully this man. And then you intentionally call me lash. Well, you could try to uh, uh, be a little neat and say, you go your three men. But I saw how respectful it was to all of these citizens, and I'm demanding that same respect. I'm going to teach you how to treat me if you don't know how. So I was going back and forth with this man. And I was totally for historical landlord. But this process was wrong. He was under national. Here at landmark. And and the building department, unprofessional. I don't know if it's pay to play here or what. But we need a change here in our global city. The Aldwins, all of y'all. All of you. It was terrible here. And sir, I don't do this, but you have money. And you will prevail because you have a comfortable lawyer. I've been dealing with these rotten departments, the building department. And I didn't know that that rotten was with landmark too. Yes, you did, Mr. Blake. You've been going for years. You know it's pay to play there too. So I'm finishing my three men. So again, this has been a learning process for me. You can't trust any of them. You see the old Aldwins, all of them are corrupt. Because it's the one-party system, all Democrat, sixty-nine in each other. Thank you.
Mr. Blake Moore, just just for the record, are you changing? Are you in favor of demolition?
I'm in, I'm I'm uh, uh, I'm changing it to just leave it blank.
Thank you, Ms. Blake Moore. Uh, next I'd like to call Patrick Grossi to the podium. And if you could uh, spell your name as well.
Sure. Uh, Patrick, P A T R S K, Grossi, G R O, S S I. Uh, I'm speaking today on behalf of Preservation Chicago, the local preservation advocacy nonprofit.
Sorry, I'm having to try.
Let you hear me now back.
Uh, sure. I'm speaking to him on behalf of Preservation Chicago. We are a local historic preservation advocacy nonprofit. Um, and and let me, I wasn't prepared to say this, but let me just say, you know, it's it's impossible to stand here. You've experienced enough feel moved in some way. I can't tell you what you should want. I can't tell you what would allow you to feel better. All I'll offer today is that there are sites of painful history. There are sites of trauma across this country and across the world that have been transformed. You said something along the lines of transforming sorrow into opportunity. All I can tell you is that it's possible. Again, you you should want that. Just that I have seen that and it is possible. Appreciate it. Um, with respect to this proceedings, however, um, I do just want to briefly voice our opposition to this request for demolition. And second, and support the findings of the Department of Plan and Development, its counsel and its expert witnesses. Building clearly retains integrity. It is a surviving work by the celebrated local architecture firm, the Holger and Roche. It's a textbook example of a contributing building within the landmark district devoted to Chicago's motor row. And automotive history. So on the merits, demolition would represent an adverse effect. Should be denied and that is the current position of Preservation Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I'd like to call Rose O'Halloran to the podium.
Rose O'Halloran, R O S E O apostrophe H A L L O R A N. I'm a member of society, Society of Automotive Historians. In the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties, I wrote a series of articles that were published in old cars publications. Regarding this historic area, we were afraid we're go- we were going to lose it at that time. Twenty-four years ago, I was a public speaker at our motor row hearings. The building, known as twenty-three forty-seven, was built for the Fiat company. Within about one year. It was taken over by Stevens Duryea. Um, some of you may may know, Duryea is a very early name in automotive history. Uh, a Duryea automobile won the first automobile race in the United States, held here in Chicago on Thanksgiving Day, eighteen ninety-five. Stevens Duryea had this building until about nineteen twenty-eight, after which it became a Packard showroom. We've brought it uh, walking tours down to Automobile Row as early as November of uh, nineteen eighty-three. And we, within the last couple of years, did a walking tour with the Chicago Architectural Group. Uh, we brought a classic car club down here. This uh, this twenty-three forty-seven building, it's a beautiful building. I'm sorry about the tragedy, I really am. Um, its loss would be greatly lamented. So please deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'd ask Michael Berkeley to the podium. Maybe I'm pronouncing it wrong because I'm Michael Berkeley or Barclay. One once. Uh, just for the record, um, Michael Berkeley uh, was in opposition to the application for the demolition according to. A file or uh, spelling M I C H A E L B E R K E L A Y.
Which organization?
An organization, yes. That was the last opinion.
I have a question. Um, with mines, I didn't check off either board. We didn't complain. And another thing is also was there owners prior to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty oh three and twenty twenty-one?
Yes, it's it's outside scope. Um, you know, that that may be things that you can, you know, gather information for.
And with the land commission and owner be willing to sit down with the E two families, that wasn't.
Today's hearing is specifically about, you know, the the criteria related to the landmark status. So topics like that, I'd encourage you, you've heard from both parties of willingness to cooperate. Their information is going to be in a part of the public record, so I'd encourage you to contact. Uh, that that was our last um, statement from the public. Uh, we'll move forward with uh, the closing statements from the parties. Uh, I'll ask both parties to limit your statements to five minutes and we'll begin with hearing from the applicant.
So, um, first we want to thank you. I'm embarrassed. First, we wanted to thank you all for for the meeting. Uh, I'm embarrassed for my city. I'm embarrassed because this isn't the way things are supposed to run and operate in the city that works. It is one city with one head and all the departments should speak together. My client. Doesn't want to be hazed anymore by the city. He's told to jump through this hoop by this department and jump through that hoop by another department. Knowing that you can't jump through both of the hoops at the same time. They told him and committed. A contract, a choice. Do this or else within these amount of days. He did that when within those amount of days, despite the fact that the person sat on the letter. For ten, fifteen days before even mailing it to Mr. Shiffrin. He then began to jump through the hoops that the city said they wanted him to jump through. They said, well, it's a form letter. Well, then they should have changed the damn form letter a long time ago. The letter said, do this or do that, but it has to be done within fifteen days. He wouldn't even gotten a regular permit within fifteen days. So that letter shouldn't have been scrapped. And if if that is the case, if you believe what the spin is today. Then they should have rewrote their damn letter. But. To add injury to the insult. We meet with the chairman of this committee in good faith. We propose, make a series of proposals. And at that meeting, I said. At that point, all of the people who are necessary for this meeting are not in this room. But little did we know that while we're meeting in good faith with the landmark commission. The building commission is suing them in court and asking for the exact same thing that they're claiming is a misnomer. A mistake or something else in an attempt to gaslight us with respect to tearing this building down. How insidious is that? The statute says clearly, if the commissioner of builders determines that the damn building is dangerous. Regardless of what this commission is, that permit shall be uh, issued. We're just asking that, forget the the spin on what he may do with it. He understands, and I, as a former alderman, have told him, there may be no way in hell that he would get a zoning change. But he understands what that means. But he he also knows. Uh, what we also don't like is to be gaslit and told to do one thing and we start trying to comply. And then uh, like Lucy and Charlie Brown, they snatched the football up from under us. This is a big mess, but they compound that injury with that lawsuit. And the lawsuit essentially says the same thing. The building is dangerous and hazardous. Despite the fact that at the meeting, with the commission, with the with the chair of this committee. ICC both commissioners and the uh, Ms. Richardson-Larkin. So they can't say, oh, we didn't know who was talking to who. I was communicating to everybody in the city of Chicago, being as reasonable as we could in order to get something done. And what did we get? Oh, you crazy? Leonard didn't say that. Oh, uh, too bad. He's just out a hundred grand. Who cares? He should have known better. And and then to say that, oh, well, you can't build housing on it. Well, I'm sorry, the zone just got changed across the street. What? Am I not D L Piper? Is is that the reason why? So we want what's fair and equitable. We don't want to believe the most cynical part about this whole ordeal of the city. That it was a reason and that was in retaliation for Mr. Shiffrin going on air and speaking out against the city. We want to believe that Marlene Hopkins was right and the building is being torn down. But you can tell us something different. Oh, no, it doesn't need to be torn down. Oh, so that means what has happened is that. It is the building department trying to infringe on the First Amendment rights of Mr. Shiffrin. For speaking out about an injustice that was going on in this city. And so I asked you to do the right thing. You you have the evidence there uh, and we'd ask that the petition go forward. If not, we'll just keep dealing with it across the street. Okay, thank you.
We'll hear from the city next.
Thank you. Um, first of all, personal privilege. I'd like to thank everyone. Thank everyone for their um, comments uh, that preceded this. And uh, it takes a lot of courage to get up and speak, especially when it involves tragedy. Um, but the question that's for the commission in this hearing is whether the demolition of twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan. Uh, would have an adverse effect on the district. And that is a simple question and it has a really simple answer. Yes, it's a contributing building to Motor Row District because it is a district full of turn-of-the-century automobile showrooms. And this is an automobile showroom from nineteen-ten. As as one of the um, public commenters said, it's a textbook example of what the district seeks to preserve. public commenters said, it's a textbook example of what the district seeks to preserve. Uh, and that conclusion is not only self-evident, but the evidence presented here today on that question, the only relevant question, is one-sided. We presented, um, Edward Torres, who gave his uh, expert opinion on the Motor Road District and why twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan, a former Fiat auto showroom, is a contributing building, um, to the Motor Road District. And why it satisfied the rules and guidelines and standards that govern this particular question. The Motor Road District preserves an era, the dawn of the American industry, American auto industry, and it's the largest intact collection of these dealerships in very close proximity. It's not just rare for Chicago, it's rare for the entire country. And it's exists because of these individual uh, auto showrooms that still make up the district. Um, so twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan inherently exhibits those significant historical and architectural features that define Motor Row. The two-story masonry building was constructed in nineteen ten, that is, within the period of significance, which is nineteen oh five to nineteen thirty-six. It was built by renowned architects, Halliburton Roche, who built other showrooms in the district. And, um, the facade is, still showcases the defining characteristics of these showrooms. The large windows, they were showrooms so that people could view the autos from, um, the street. They could window shop. And it preserves the, um, the the terracotta is in great shape and, um, it it's like similar buildings in the district. Um, it's set up like a show, an auto showroom that, um, as they were built in that era, when automobiles were just becoming large consumer items in America. Um, so it necessarily follows that the demolition of this building does not meet, uh, satisfy the criteria, um, for demolition under rules and regulations. Nor is it consistent with the guidelines for demolition. And nor is it consistent with any rehabilitation standards, uh, that are promulgated by the Secretary of Interior. Um, Mr. Torres's opinion and the evidence on which he relied on that to form that opinion stand unrebutted. The only conclusion that is consistent with the evidence that was presented here today on the relevant question is that the demolition permit should be denied. And for that reason, it would be an adverse effect if Motor Road District were to lose this building. Um, a brief point about the case that was presented by the applicant. None of that is relevant to the question that was presented today. And much of it is built on a misunderstanding of the letter that was, uh, sent, this fifteen-day notice letter that was sent to, um, the owner of the building. And John Scott's testimony on that point, I hope clarified that it's not a permission slip to avoid the normal process for seeking demolition. We are in the normal process right now. That's why we're here at this hearing, because the applicant applied for a demolition permit. This is one of the steps to proceed towards that question. And we've answered the question presented in this hearing. And that sole question is whether the demolition of twenty-three forty-seven South Michigan have an adverse effect if it were demolished. I have nothing further, and we have that you denied the permit application. Thank you.
You. Do I get to reply since it's my turn?
It's just both statements. Okay. Um, you have a statement, just, uh, the parties may submit draft findings and conclusions for my, uh, uh, for my consideration. Uh, the deadline for submitting your draft findings and conclusions is Thursday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and four, at ten AM. Two thousand and twenty-four, that's correct, at ten AM. Not back in time. Uh, I will not consider submissions made after that time and date.
Is the procedure to extend it automatically wheels up Tuesday, it won't be back until after that time.
Do you want to make sure? The date that was requested was October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do you have a recommendation on? November.
Or after election day, so November, not November fifth, if that's the Tuesday, November sixth or November seventh.
Yeah, we can push it back to the the twenty-ninth. Uh, reason being for the schedule is that there's, uh, the next commission meeting is being held uh, the week of the fourth, I believe it's the, so the seventh, correct? Yeah, uh, it's on November seventh is our next meeting, so we're trying to have everything in order to keep in time for that next meeting.
Right.
Uh, if the twenty-ninth is acceptable, would ten AM still be acceptable?
To get it in, right? You have Adam?
New Year's five. Uh, we can do it in the business day if at four PM. Okay, uh, so October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, by four PM. Um, and please send one compiled PDF file, uh, to the Chicago Landmarks Commission email account. That's, uh, at C C L at city of Chicago, it's all one word, dot org. Just to spell that out, C I T Y O F C H I C A G O dot O R G. Um, before I move into adjournment, uh, I did want to just follow up, um, Mr. Ray, um, as well as, um, Ms. Cardwell and Ms. Crawford, who I'm hoping maybe all did not leave the room. Uh, just wanted to confirm you did not select, uh, that you were either in favor or in opposition. Uh, you know, essentially you listed as almost a neutral party, so I just wanted to clarify if you wanted to remain that or what might be.
Well, we want to get more aggressive on this situation. Yeah, and we want the other families to to to, uh, get involved also. And then, uh, we just want to be a part of the contributor. Contributor, I can never pronounce it right. We want to be a part of the decision-making. We want to contribute, uh, what we think, because we know if there was no death, twenty-one deaths, we wouldn't be in this room right now. So we want to be a part of the decision-making, work with the alderman, the owner and the landmark. So that's that's our part. I mean, if we want, if we can get a statement in that October twenty-ninth as advisory, we would love to do that also.
Yeah. I I I did want to, uh, make mention, um, the Landmarks Commission meeting, the upcoming one that I mentioned on November seventh is a public meeting. Uh, so in that meeting, you have the opportunity, we encouraged you actually to, you know, come to that meeting. Uh, I believe the time is already posted online, but they typically start at twelve forty-five.
Not only being public, we would like to have a statement documented.
That statement would would go on the record in that meeting, um, you know, as what as well.
We'll send statements to both all parties.
Okay. Um, I just to, you know, kind of close the loop, though, as it pertains to, you know, the appearance forms that you filled out. Um, we essentially, it sounds like you all as as neutral, neither in so in favor or.
We we can't say that we're in favor of anything right now because we don't know the the plan, we don't know the benefits that that can occur. But we can say tear it down and we don't get no benefits. But we say keep it up, we get the benefits.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Can you just clarify that you, there will be a decision for the November seventh meeting or no? Are you just saying there will be a meeting on November seventh?
There is a meeting on November seventh.
Okay.
Same, same place.
The commission will vote on this. Um, I would recommend, uh, just because I don't want to speak out loud and give you incorrect, uh, information. Uh, this is all online on the, uh, Chicago Landmarks Commission, uh, website for, um, the the location of the next meeting, and it's on the seventh. Um, I'd recommend.
On the demolition portion after the twenty-ninth.
So I I'm going to move through and adjourn it first and then we can kind of answer those. So, um, this does conclude today's public hearing. Uh, I will report my findings and conclusions to the commission. And commission staff will make the entire record of hearing available to the full commission for its review, including the transcript of today's hearing. Uh, the commission will make a final decision approving or disproving, uh, the permit application at its regular commission on Chicago Landmarks meeting on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the meeting is open to the public. Details, uh, for participation are available at the commission website at chicago.gov backslash C C L. So hopefully that answers that question. That's that's it. Um, I believe that copy is for for you all to keep. That's all we have for today. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.